Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, November 14th County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please. Good morning again, and if I could remind everyone to silence their cell phones, please, and the meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender, and if you need a listening device, Craig would be able to help you with that. With that, we'll go to routine business. Item one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes four to zero. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from November 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes or corrections? All those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Bills to be paid of $3,507,496.22. Pay the bills.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Litch, you have some comments?
Good morning, Commissioner. Yes, I do. I wanted to go over a few items in the bills today and just have a brief discussion. There was South Dakota Department of Motor Vehicle check for $2,732,708.52. And I've given you folks a crib sheet here, and I thought maybe if we just went over the highlights of where that money comes from and where it's going, it might be beneficial to the public. If you look at the top of the sheet, the total, or about halfway down it says Minnehaha's grand total. The total that was collected last month from the Treasurer's Office is $3,434,948.79. That's the total collected in one month at the Treasurer's Office. And the breakouts are down below that. And if you look at the Minnehaha totals, they're the first ones, the 4% mobile home registration fees at just about eight grand. Those are taxes for new mobile homes only. The second line there, the County Road and Bridge Fund, the 22-5 and the 67 are broke out between road and bridge, and the county is able to keep $237,021.45. And if you go down to the third line, the County Special Highway Fund, that breaks out to $142,897.97. And that money is paid out to the townships quarterly. The county work thing you see there, the county is able to keep $262,929.98. And there are various splits that go into those funds or accounts throughout the county, so we get to keep that. There's a municipality 5%, that's just about $50,000. Those are motor vehicle fees that go to the municipalities. And then the county supply fee of $2,488.82, that is because the state quit publishing the reports and required the county to do it, so we charged them back for doing that. And so the total the county got to keep out of that $3.4 million is over $702,000 for the month. And then, of course, the $2,732,708 that we send into the state every month, it looks like a big chunk of money, and it is, but that goes to the state. And actually, we do get smaller portions of that money back on quarterly basis, annual basis, and some on a weekly basis, but I didn't want to go off into the weeds on that. We started putting the payment fee, the remittance to the state on our bills because we do write the check, even though it's not technically a bill. We thought it was in the public interest to go ahead and put that on the paper so folks could see how much money we do collect in behalf of the state. On the bills also, there was a Department of Revenue, the courts, Human Services involuntary. We had $7,800 worth of bills that we paid there. Another interesting thing on today's bills, Test Point Medical LLC, they do blood draws. The county spent $5,280 last month on blood draws, and then after you draw the blood, somebody has to analyze it. So we pay the city of Sioux Falls Finance for the analysis, and the analysis for those blood draws was $6,800 bucks. There's a couple of other items in here. Infrastructure Management Services, that was DJ's pavement management update. That was over about $21,000 on the bills this month. They also paid a few bills there. A bridge railing for $314,526. Prom construction for a bridge replacement, they made a payment of $153,701. South Dakota Department of Revenue, we also had Human Services involuntary, which was over $18,000, involuntary commitments. And those were, that is the mentally ill portion of that. Metro Communications Agency, we also paid out $26,000 as a portion, a portion of our payment to those folks. So I just wanted to touch on some of those highlights so the public hopefully has a little bit better understanding when they see that big number down there of where the money comes from and where it's going. Stand by for any questions if there are any.
Does anyone have any questions of the auditor? Commissioner?
Bob, we don't, on a weekly basis, see our expenditure on payroll. What is our payroll on a bi-weekly basis?
You know, I'm not prepared to answer that, and I was hoping Carrie would be up here. Maggie? No? I can get that information or provide it to you next week.
Because I think that's something that the public might be interested to know. I might be interested to know.
Okay. Well, I'll dig that up, and we'll present it next week then.
Other questions? If not, we have a motion to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item four are reports. Item A is the County Sheriff's report for October. Item five are personnel actions. Consider a motion to approve routine personnel action.
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine personnel action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There's no applications for abatement. Item seven is to authorize the auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Minnehaha County building cleaning contracts. Mr. Krins.
Morning, Commissioner. Mark Krins, Facilities Department. We're currently going through some staffing changes due to a couple retirements on our custodial side. We currently have contracted all the buildings to be cleaned except the Public Safety Building, Administration, and the JDC Building. I have drafted the bid documents, and they have been approved by the state's attorney, so I'm requesting commission approval to authorize the auditor to publish a notice to bid for contract cleaning. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions for Mark? I will tell you that we did this on a short notice, but that's okay, because I'm the one who approved it, and if you don't like it, I'll arm wrestle you later.
Rest of your now.
Either time's fine with me.
I'd rather just make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
We are in desperate need of help, so thank you for bringing that forward. We have a motion and, I believe, a second to approve the publishing of that notice for building cleaning services. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Mark here. How soon do we expect to then have that services, those services provided by a bidder on this? I mean, are we?
I want to have somebody onboard by the first of the year.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. There are no planning and zoning notices this morning. Item nine is compromise for lien, DPNO-65304, for $12,628.51. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. Before you is DPNO-65304 in the amount of $12,628.51. The fees are primarily for COBRA payments. There is one for rent assistance and two are for legal representation. There is no real estate transaction in this request. The applicant expresses in her narrative that she suffers from a chronic disability and has undergone multiple surgeries, is due to undergo surgery again in December, and states that she only receives $800 a month SSDI and only about, averages about $797 a month over the last seven months as a nanny. She's also been in a motor vehicle accident and is anticipating a settlement for personal injury claim, but she's concerned that if she pays off this lien, she'll not going to have any funds left over for the impending medical expenses coming in the near future. She'd like to request a release of the lien in full with no payment, but is also willing to consider a compromise and release of the lien in full upon payment of $2,000. Her attorney, Mr. Alvine, is here to answer any of your questions. She was not able to attend the meeting today.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, first of all, from Melinda? Thank you. Mr. Alvine, I'm sure you have some comments that you'd like to make, and again, I just, Mr. Alvine does need to identify himself, because I guess I've already done that for him. But anyway, we do not need to identify the client, and so if we would just keep that confidential, and if you'd come forward, please, we'd be happy to listen to you this morning.
Thank you. On behalf of my client, I'm here to request a compromise of a lien. The vehicle accident is a minor accident, soft tissue accident. There's no, I don't believe, going to be a big windfall here on either side. As you can tell from her application, she suffers from a severe disability that's going to be lifelong, severe, and I don't see her financial situation changing. She lives on very limited income. I've reviewed her past payment history, and it does appear that her partial payments are probably what she can afford, and as you can tell, they're very minimal. With that said, I would ask the commission to consider reducing this. I don't see a future ever her ability to pay in this limited income. This is overwhelming for her. With that said, I can answer any questions you have.
Grant, would you tell me, tell us all your name and address? I'm sorry, I introduced you, but you do need...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's my fault.
You want my address? Grant Alvine. I live at 405 West Harple Drive here in Sioux Falls. I'm an attorney in Sioux Falls.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Commissioner?
Mr. Alvine, I'm just wondering if, I mean, we don't go out and collect these payments, you know? We encourage people to make whatever payment they're able to when they're able to. I'm just curious if there's something related to this settlement of this accident that requires her to clear up her credit history in order to receive the settlement? Or is there anything that really changes as a result of this?
Good question. All I'm doing is addressing this. It's a lien. I don't want to pay over a lien. I want to recognize the lien. I want to inform you that she's going to be coming into some money. I believe this would be a good time to address the ability for her ever to pay this lien. This lien will always hover over her. It causes financial stress, emotional stress, and I believe she has a significant severe disability that would justify a release in this one.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, I think that, first of all, let me thank you, Mr. Alvine, for coming in because I believe that there are many personal injury cases that are settled where people owe the county money that their attorneys do not come in. So you're to be commended for bringing this to our attention, and a lot of these settlements obviously happen without really any paperwork exposed to the public. And I think that there's a darn good chance that your client will probably be depending on county assistance for medical and other reasons going forward, and from my point of view, getting a couple thousand dollars is better than nothing.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I guess I'm just thinking out loud, more or less, and most of these are poor relief, although there's some public defender expenses on here that I, and public advocate that I think definitely should be paid. The poor relief, I'm kind of with Jeff. I think those were, I don't know, we don't have anybody here to address them. I think most of them were for COBRA payments, and she must have insurance now because this last payment made was like 2012, so she must have some insurance. The fact that we paid the COBRA insurance probably saved us from a lot of medical bills we would have had otherwise. I don't know that I'm interested in waiving the public defender and public advocate costs, which frankly aren't significant compared to the rest of the poor relief services on here.
Well, I'm not opposed to this either. I mean, typically, we would not compromise at this level, but I think these are fairly unique circumstances, and I agree with Commissioner Barth that you are to be commended here because frankly, since I've been on the commission, this is the first time an accident is being settled that anybody's bringing it to the attention of the commission, so I do really appreciate that. So I would make a motion to compromise this lien for payment of $2,000.
Second.
Other comments? Questions?
My comment, I'll go along with that. My comment is that would be more than the public defenders and the public advocates, and so I think it is a little high, but I will go along with that. The other thing I want to ask Carol, I think, would be, is what is our policy, or otherwise, maybe Bob Litch would know the policy that we have as far as wiping off liens? Is it after 20 years? I don't know that Bob's listening to me, so.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Yes, as a general rule of thumb, between that 20 and 30 years, that you do that. When the book comes over to Human Services to review on that, it's divided between those that have had a burial and those that have had no activity for five years and those that have been around for a good 20 or 30 years.
And that doesn't affect these, but I do want that question answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to have maybe a little bit of a discussion because when I came this morning, my thought process was to relieve all the public support for poor relief because of her situation. And if you look through the multiple pages, you'll see why that's a significant issue and settle for just the legal fees, which haven't been that much, and I don't know what they're for, to be honest, but it's more than $2,000.
Oh, maybe I'm looking for that.
So I would second. I guess I'd have to make the motion.
It is second.
Because I don't know exactly what that dollar amount is. I didn't...
Public defender, public advocate?
Yes.
From what I'm seeing, it's less than $300.
And plus, there's been payments made, so then are you going to try to take off the payments that have been made?
I'm going to get a legal opinion again.
Okay.
Which is good. Since I can't make a motion, I'm going to have to solicit a substitute motion.
I will do your substitute motion since they motioned and seconded, but I need to know what it is.
Can I second the motion?
It's already been seconded.
Yeah. The motion right...
Not the motion he wants, though.
Not the motion that I want.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think if I might, Mr. Chairman, I would just articulate your, perhaps give a little overview of the lien that you're indicating you'd like a discussion on.
I would like the difference, the discussion on the difference between what the total lien is for versus just the public support that we gave in legal fees, which is the public advocate, and I think there was just public advocate.
There's one public defender. No, there's one public defender.
But that amount is much smaller than $2,000. It's 260, according to Olivia's addition.
Instead of us trying to sit here and do math and figure this out, I mean, I would be willing to withdraw my motion and make a motion to defer this for a week for further consideration so we could have some confidence in our math and our ability to look through this.
Olivia's quick math is that she does have a dollar amount of $260.
Yep, that's what...
So what about the payments that have been made to date?
I would leave those.
Yeah, I think that those were honest contributions, frankly, to trying to do what she could do for the poor relief, which is unusual. Also, we don't really see people making regular scheduled payments of small amounts for poor relief, especially with an income of what she's showing is pretty admirable, frankly. Commissioner Heiburger?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a substitute motion to approve a payment of, for the public advocate and public defender expenses of $260 and clean up, whatever you want to say, I can't remember, clean up all the poor relief charges.
I need a second.
That was a substitute motion.
Is there a second?
Can I make a second if I made the original motion?
If you want to withdraw your original motion, which I thought you did, but maybe I'm wrong about that. Did you withdraw your original motion?
I am now. Yes.
And then whoever made the second, Mr. Chairman, would need to withdraw their second.
I was going to ask Mr. Barth.
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. So now we're back to the motion that I believe Commissioner Heiburger made of accepting a payment of $260 for the public defender, public advocate charges.
I'll second that.
And compromising the addition, yeah.
Yep. Does anyone have any questions? Is everybody clear on what we were talking about doing?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your thought, but I'm not going to support this motion.
That's fine. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to compromise for the public defender, public advocate charges of $260 and use the partial payments that have been made over a period of time towards the poor relief charges that have occurred. I believe we're going to need a roll call vote. Does everybody understand the motion? They're shaking their heads, so that's good.
Shaking our heads in the affirmative.
Yeah. Thanks. Olivia, please go ahead.
Barth?
No.
Bender?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes.
We will compromise the lien for the public advocate, public defender charges of $260 and give her credit for all the payments she's made towards the poor relief over the last few years.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Grant, for coming.
Hope to see you again.
Item B is a DPNO-33580 for $1,202.50 and DPNO-34788 for $5,001.81. Olivia? Or Melinda?
Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. In the second compromise, the petition was submitted by a couple. Each of the liens was incurred individually before they were married, but they are now married and would like to refinance their home. So they discovered the lien during this application for refinancing and realized that they can only go forward by either eliminating the lien or not being able to refinance. The DPNO-33580 and DPNO-34788 in the amount of $6,231 total with both of them combined. They express in their narrative that they're trying, they've attempted to clean up their credit so that they can refinance. They've had some issues with their, and hardships with their son. They'd like to move forward and improve their quality of life and offer, and are requesting to release both of the liens in full with no payment, or are offering to contribute $600 total to release the lien in full upon that payment, in hopes, of course, that that $600 won't keep them from again being able to meet whatever costs are incurred with the refinancing. The applicant is not here today to answer any of your questions, but if I can answer any for you, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Melinda. Does anyone have any questions for her? Commissioner Barth?
Melinda, do you know what the date is that they wish to refinance on?
No, they're on hold right now until they can clear this up.
Commissioner Heiburger, do you have questions?
Well, I just, a comment, it's kind of a little bit the same situation, although there's a lot of court-appointed attorneys and public defenders, and there's been a lot of partial payments on this, and I would consider compromising the fuel and the rent assistance that we've provided. And then there have been some payments that could go towards a court-appointed attorney. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in sympathy with Commissioner Heiburger's comment. At the same time, you know, we are representing the county on this. I would make a motion to allow compromise in full with a payment of $1,000.
Is there a second?
And they offered 600. I'm just making a counter.
Is there a second? Motion dies for the lack of a second. I would say that this one, although it's 42 pages long, this one's a little different circumstance in the fact that there isn't a lot of poor relief involved. It's more legal cost, for whatever reason, and court-appointed attorneys, which I think I treat differently than poor relief issues. That's all I'll say because I can't make a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if there is a motion you'd like made, I could make it on your behest.
Well, I think we'd be better off to defer this one to get more accurate information about what's court-appointed, what is poor relief, and because it's 42 pages long, it's going to take a little bit of time to do that.
Make a motion to defer action on this.
I'll second that.
For how long, sir?
Just till next week.
One week?
One week. Differ for one week.
Although I can't make a motion, it seems like I am.
I would second deferring for one week.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to defer for one week for more information. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I'm in trouble again...
Absolutely not, Mr. Chairman.
I know where I can hire an attorney. Item number 10...
Public comment, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one. Now's the time for public comment. If anyone has any comments to be made in reference to anything that is not on the agenda, would be happy to hear from you. Item 10 is a public hearing to consider the ordinance enacting the 2017 Minnehaha County Revised Animal Control Ordinance and repeal the 2002 County Animal Control Ordinance. Maggie, do you have any comments on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy is here from the Humane Society to answer any questions that anybody has.
Hi, Andy Astry.
Good morning.
Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Good morning.
Does anyone have questions for Andy? Again, that's a fairly lengthy ordinance change. However, there's not a lot of detailed changes to that. We've had an opportunity to read through this. Does anyone have any comments? And because this is a public meeting, we would take any comments from the public, other than maybe what Andy has to add. No one's moving? Do you have any comments that you would like to make?
No, I just think that the ordinance is, that's working with Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office, they, the improvements, they help define, you know, the animal ordinances a little better for, and that, I think, was something we needed. They, um, the improvements, they help define, uh, you know, the animal ordinances a little better for and and that, I think, was a something we needed.
Thank you for all your hard work and being part of the changes that were proposed and Maggie, thank you for all your work also.
Since you can't make a motion, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, Commissioner Hiberger?
We don't, maybe I missed it. My head is fuzzy. Did we ask for public input? We did.
We did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't think anybody moved.
I think anybody moved. I was just recognizing that it was a.
Nope, that's fine. No other comments, no questions. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you again for being here.
You bet. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Andy.
Item eleven is authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the county and HDR uh, for professional services to conduct engineering design for the highway department. Good morning, DJ.
Morning Commissioners, DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. Trish is making her way to a different page on the briefing memo that has a map, so you can follow along a little bit with what I I'm talking about. On a pretty regular basis, the county highway department conducts periodic reviews of our infrastructure, our road system, our bridge system, our signs, our culverts, uh, asset management, just in general. And uh, last year during part of this review, uh, we identified a couple of different projects that were going to need to happen uh, in the future, within probably the next ten years or so. And and the traditional sense of those projects would be reconstruction of corridors one oh three and one oh nine uh, north of county highway one fourteen, which is the east-west road where Sherman is at. So, uh, the two stretches of road there shown on the map on the northeast corner of the county. Now, the reconstruction of these uh, of these projects was not uh, estimated using our standard estimation methods of of breaking down quantities and and looking at detailed costs. Uh, but just knowing that estimate of one million dollars per mile for a reconstruction project is is somewhat close for really long-range budgeting. Um, uh, we know that this is probably gonna cost fourteen million dollars or so, uh, in today's dollars, uh, if we were to reconstruct those. So, um, not knowing that that was uh, going to be the best investment for our infrastructure system, uh, we came up with the idea that we would do an asset review uh, specific for these corridors and and investigate alternative solutions to reconstruction and also involve the involve the public, uh, to try to find out uh, if they have any ideas or or inform them along the process during a study, uh, to see uh, what the public's response is if we do come up with alternative solutions. And when I say alternative solutions, I mean, you know, one extreme could be reconstruction, one extreme could be uh, taking the asphalt roadway and turning it into a gravel roadway or something in between where we have uh, a different kind of pavement that we put down that's less expensive to maintain and and operate. And so, uh, we have been working with HDR in the last several weeks to develop a scope for this type of study and public involvement effort. And, uh, we've proposed that we joint efforts and the county, uh, does some of the tasks uh, to try to keep the ta- uh, the cost to a minimum, because this is really the first time that we've done something like this. And so, uh, bringing forward today, uh, proposal from an agreement with HDR uh, to uh, study these two corridors over the next uh, six months or so, six, eight months and uh, and develop a recommendation on how to proceed with uh, with these two corridors. And as part of that, like I discussed, a really large public outreach effort in order to try to uh, gain buy-in for whatever the the proposed solution is that we come up with. So, uh, the agreement itself is forty-six thousand seventy-nine dollars and it's our stip- our typical engineering agreement. That's an hourly rate that is not to exceed that dollar amount. So if they work on it less, then we'll bill out less. Uh, if they have additional tasks that we identify, we amend it to go higher. So, uh, with that, this is something I think pretty new for the commission to to hear about, so I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
So you want to have any questions for DJ, Commissioner Bender?
So, I mean, it's new for the commission. Is the highway department ever, um, engaged anyone to do a similar study in any other section of our of our road system?
Not to my knowledge, no. It would be highly unlikely if 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 Minnehaha County had done that, uh, has done this before. Certainly not to my knowledge.
Do you know if HDR has ever done it for for another governmental entity?
They are very familiar with the type of study and they have done it, I don't think for a county highway, but for other government agencies like, uh, probably a state government or a city government. Uh, they've done some similar studies in their uh, in their proposal, they reference a document called Converting Paved Roads to Unpaved. It's an NCHRP four eighty-five uh, syn- uh, synopsis. And I was unaware of that document, uh, but they're very familiar with it and in our discussions with them, and so they're very familiar with the the subject matter.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
DJ, I just drove, uh, one fourteen through Sherman. And, uh, while I was there, I looked up the road on highway, uh, one oh three. Looked like there was new asphalt on one oh three from what I could see from one fourteen.
We've had to do a very significant amount of paving or patching along that whole corridor from Sherman north up to, uh, the state highway eleven. And so there's several sections of that that have been patched. And when we do a a patch with our in-house staff, it's usually, we call it a skin lift. It's like a a half inch to a one-inch lift of asphalt, so it rides smoother. It it's not as bumpy and it's not.
Hence my my just superficial observation, but let me also say I like driving on roads where there's no traffic, so that's a great place to go.
Other questions? I guess one of the questions I would have DJ is when highway one hundred opens in a few years, how's that gonna affect traffic counts on these roads?
On other sections of our system, uh, that's something that we've really been in active conversation and and studies, multiple studies in in different parts of the of our county highway system, but this is far enough away, uh, from that area that I don't think it will have any influence whatsoever.
And I agree, it is far enough away, but when people start looking at the numbers that that highway one hundred's gonna um, have up to fifty thousand cars a day, uh, there's gonna be people looking for alternatives, and I guess it would be nice to have at some point some consideration of how those, uh, traffic counts may be enhanced, because they will be enhanced.
That's a great point. We're right now under study with two different consultants on, uh, for Maple Street and for Rice Street. And those obviously are gonna have direct impacts. And so it's something that we just had a meeting last week with the city of Sioux Falls. Uh, and, uh, it's something that we're actively looking at and and aware of and conscious of.
Have there been any updates on the projections on when those are going to be completed?
Yes, they just changed the uh, the completion date of the highway one hundred project for, um, it was originally two thousand and nineteen and now it is, I think, August of two thousand and twenty. And that bids within the next couple of weeks, that that phase of the project, I think it's forty-five million dollars or something like that.
Big number. Commissioner Barth?
Mister Chairman, you bring up a good point about highway eleven and highway one hundred. Twelve years ago, there was, we approved a TIF for an ethanol plant right there. There's a railroad track that goes right by Sherman as well. And, uh, I think that when it comes to economic development, paved roads, especially intersection of two paved roads and a railroad track makes it a likely candidate for major economic development projects. And so I'm I'm happy to go ahead with the study. I just don't want to give up on on that being a potential location.
Can I make a comment on that too, Chairman?
Commissioner, Commissioner DJ? He's over there.
Bowden.
Salary is gone.
Your bar and and the entire commission, when we entered into a study like this, we definitely don't have any preconceived notion of how it's gonna end up, and that's why we're doing the study. Um, I wouldn't be surprised one bit if if we're told that we should reconstruct this. I also wouldn't be surprised one bit if we're told that we should turn it back to gravel or or a combination of something in between. So, um, we certainly don't have any pressures on the consultant to go one way or another with their recommendation. So, that's that's what we're trying to find out is the best alternative. And a big part of that is is that area, everybody that lives in that area, uh, what they want.
Thank you.
The other thing that I thought of as you were talking, um, you know, there's been lots of conversation about expansion of schools, obviously, which is a good thing. But where those are going to be and how that may impact even Minnehaha County highways. I think somehow we need to be involved in those conversations or at least keep updated, because, um, Lincoln County, we know will be impacted, but Minnehaha could be also by where those schools are located and what we're going to do to change those traffic patterns.
In our in our preliminary discussions to develop the scope for this agreement, uh, we discussed certain target audiences that we would be advertising to, if you want to say that, to attend these public outreach sessions. And, uh, the school districts and our county planning office were both on on that list. So, uh, they, we hope that they're active participants as as they're direct shareholders of our of our system, our stakeholders of our system.
Well, it would be nice to keep those updated. Commissioner?
I'll make a motion, Mister Chairman, to authorize you to sign, uh, this agreement with HDR.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to, uh, approve the agreement with HDR. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Item twelve is to authorize the chair to sign an Arnold Foundation Public Safety Assessment MOU Amendment. Good morning, Erin.
Good morning Commissioners, Erin Sersk, Minnehaha County Commission. The county and the courts entered into a MOU with Arnold Foundation to implement the public safety assessment, the PSA, um, as part of an overall pre-trial, uh, policy, uh, change. There is change in the, the PSA used to, in order to use the PSA before, you would have to fill out a uh, complete a comprehensive application, go through a vetting process and then be approved, which we did and we were approved. Um, now through some different changes and the like kind of the market need for this from other counties, uh, they're releasing, being a little bit more open with the tool and releasing it for, um, mass consumption next year. So as part of that, they updated our MOU just to let us know and keep us on the same agreement that things will be a lot more open. Uh, the kind of the weighting of the different pieces of the tool and whatnot will all be available to the public starting next calendar year.
Any questions for Erin?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item thirteen is to authorize the chair to sign the individual beneficiary recipient agreement contract award for an RFP ten fifty-six crisis service grant program.
Yes, that's a, it's a very long RFP title. Um, this is as part of the, uh, a House bill that was passed at the state level. Um, the state are offering small grants for local jurisdictions to implement crisis response mechanisms to respond to those in mental health and behavioral health crisis. Our county guys approved the application of an RFP for eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty to kind of move into a phase two portion of the triage center project that's already going. And then, uh, to contract out some evaluation of the grant and then also to host a mental health criminal justice summit, which will hopefully be collaborative with some of our national partners. So with approval, we can sign this contract, uh, send it to the state and start pulling down the funding to implement, uh, the work plan.
Questions for Erin? If not, is there a motion?
Mister Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that at some point or someone else can, but I I wanted to ask Erin about the program that they're going forward with in Rapid City. Uh, and the Argus leaders had some comment on that too, where they're getting some funding from other sources and and really moving faster than we are to get uh, progress and if you had any thoughts on that?
Um, as I'm not the expert on their project, uh, we are working very collaborative on not just our pre-trial work. They're also implementing the Arnold Tool PSA, but also making sure that we're on the same page with in regards to the triage type projects. I do know that they have local philanthropists that have invested significant significant funding to implement this type of model, which is based on San Antonio, uh, which is Bear County, where that too had a philanthropist to kind of have a one-stop shop for things. Uh, they got a little bit early, uh, some of the funding, the funding that we're using to do the triage center planning project this year is the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge. And they're on a different funding level than us with that foundation. And that's to implement overall, uh, pre-trial and different strategies, not just the behavioral health. Um, so I know that those are just some of the funding mechanisms they're using to implement what they're calling, I believe, a restoration center. Uh, but Carrie Benz, our director, is and we've been at different conferences with their HS director, their human service director. And, um, I'm sure they'd be really open to talking or giving a presentation if you guys are more interested in that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement.
No, we don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion.
Make a motion.
You denied that, didn't you?
Now you have a motion and a second.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement with the RFP Crisis Service Grant Program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Now, I don't know if we're on item fourteen or fifteen. My pad says fourteen, my sheet says fifteen. So we're gonna go to fourteen A and B. How's that? And Erin, I think, um, you were asked to do a liaison report for Commissioner Karski.
Yes, uh, yes.
If you want to do that as fourteen, then we'll give fifteen to the commission.
Okay, um, just speaking of the triage project, which is what that grant will help us continue to work on. Uh, just to give an update, we had a policy committee meeting, uh, for our triage project this last week. Uh, where we were able to review some preliminary data from Augustana Research Institute and it, um, proved and demonstrated the need for this type of service project. Uh, we've had a total of three policy-level meetings with twenty-plus stakeholders at each. We had a kickoff meeting with over forty community stakeholders. We went on site visits. And if you hadn't had the opportunity, KSFY did a couple of great stories yesterday regarding this type of work in our community. Um, so with the meeting, the last policy meeting, uh, we saw some good data, had some really good discussion and have now tasked an operations-level committee, which is more boots on the ground, uh, to kind of investigate, dig in the data more and come up with a a pilot project or what good next steps would look like in regards to meeting our target target population, different services uh, and what that would look like. Uh, we should have some final reports for publication end of January, beginning of February, where the proposed plan uh, will be part of the business plan and then a full data report as well.
Anyone have any questions for Erin? Thank you for bringing that. Does anyone else have any liaison reports? Commissioner Bender?
I just have a a couple, um, pretty brief. The first one is just as we talked about transportation planning uh, this morning. It was brought up at the UDC meeting last Thursday that there's an, um, opening on the, I'm gonna get the name right, the MPO, the Metropol- Metropolitan Planning Organization, for a citizen to be a participant in that. Um, that is the organization that looks at and participates in planning of our transportation system, particularly in the metropolitan area. Um, but it's a great opportunity for somebody who's really, um, interested in, um, you know, the things that affect all of us every day as we're trying to get to work and trying to get about town is how the the roads work together and how they're going to, um, work together as our community continues to grow. So I'd just really encourage people to apply, uh, for those positions. There's so many opportunities in our community to get involved and this is just one of them. Um, but if you're interested, you can go out on the CCOG website or you can contact the county and we can get an application for you for that. Um, and then just a follow-up, just to let you know that the jail leadership, um, team continues to meet. We're meeting today again. We meet almost every other week at this point. We have, um, pretty aggressive agendas every, um, meeting. And so that project continues to to move ahead. So I appreciate of everybody, all the staff time, um, that's involved in that.
Thank you for your help with that and all the time you've spent on that. It's been a huge project, obviously. Uh, Commissioner Byrne?
Commissioner Bender reminded me, uh, but on the planning commission, we also are taking applications, uh, for people that would like to be on the planning commission. And that goes until December something?
Beginning of December.
Beginning of December. And, uh, we don't necessarily have openings, because, uh, the incumbents are suggesting they'll stay, but a little competition never hurts.
Anyone else? Just a quick reminder that I think bids are due on the 908 building tomorrow. Tomorrow at 10:30, so we're excited to hear about what would happen with that.
I do have one.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think I have a fuzzy brain today, but that was not my liaison report. We did have a public defenders meeting this morning for a board of directors, missing a couple of people, but just talked about the difficulties in that office and understaffing again, and it was very interesting.
And I have just a real short liaison report. Met with Carol and with Lynn this morning on the ambulance update on the ordinance and the training and support and the funding issues. Those are all subcommittees, and they'll bring back a written report in about a month or so, and Maggie's been helping with the ordinance and the legal needs, so I appreciate that also. Any other liaison reports? Any new business?
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office, and this would be the Auditor's liaison report, I guess, but I, I wanted to tell you about a meeting that took place yesterday afternoon late down at the chamber. It was hosted by Christine Erickson of the Chamber of Commerce. Christine is kind of the moderator. On the panel up front was Matt Michaels, Andy Gerlach, and Mike Houdyshell from the state, and the, the meeting was concerning TIFs, and it was pretty informational. The county was well-represented. Dean Karski was there. We had two from the Auditor's Office and three from Equalization. And I want you to know that Teresa Staley came to bat for the county and said that, among other things, that she felt the county should have a seat at the table when it came to these TIFs, so I appreciated her remarks. You know, in, in the, it was real interesting to, to, because I loosely knew how it was done, but they described the action on, for economic TIFs and, and for industrial TIFs, on how the state makes the schools whole for the tax revenue that they'd be losing through the, the state student funding formula that they have. Actually, when it is a TIF, there is a slight increase in your taxes to make the schools whole. And pursuant to that conversation, one of the, one of the folks up front, and I'm not sure, it wasn't one of the three that I mentioned from the state, it was somebody else made the comment that he thought that the counties were made whole, because on the base that we could, we could take the, the growth in CPI and add that in there, and so the county got gains on the base. And, but that, everybody from the county started kind of looking at each other. We came back and investigated that this morning, and that's not true. When the base is set, the base stays there for the county until the TIF is paid off. So, that was a, a little bit of erroneous information, maybe somebody was misinformed, but anyway, we, we went and checked our Growth by Taxing District Sheet and then our PT-75, both of which are sent into the state, and looked at the numbers between the growth and the one that we finally put in, and there's no growth. And so, we, we proved up what we thought to be true. And Gene, I wanted to comment to you too. When I was on the city council, the UDC was one of those things that you go to, you don't know about when you're running for the job, but I found it fascinating, and to have all those players in one room working together, and you can see out into the future, and people will bring things. It was absolutely fascinating, one of the fun parts about being with the city council. So, are there any questions about last, yesterday's meeting? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Any old business? If not, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for contracts, litigation, and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into executive session for those three items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passed. Will take about a five-minute recess.